Good evening, everyone. This evening is June 20th, 2017, and this is a regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise to salute the flag.
Let's raise the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the members.
Mr. Ferenti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Here.
We'll start with the superintendent's report, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have several items on the superintendent's report, but the first one is the introduction of Sarah Humus, who has, is the newly appointed principal of the Lincoln Elementary School, and we're really excited to have Sarah come onboard with us. Sarah comes to us with seventeen years of experience in education in Gloucester, Lawrence, and most recently in Lowell. Eight of these years were spent as assistant principal in Gloucester and Lowell. She has an extensive background in social-emotional learning, which is really important to us, and includes leading the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Program along with her staff in Lowell, serving as an emergency management team leader, and developing a school-wide anti-bullying program which resulted in a more than fifty percent reduction in disciplinary referrals at her current school. She has an extensive experience working with interdisciplinary teams to analyze data and believes in distributed leadership as a means to improve student achievement. Prior to becoming an administrator, Sarah taught grade five, and she taught English Language Arts at the middle school level, and she also served as an after-school program coordinator. Sarah earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Salem State, a master's in education from Pittsburgh State University, and a certificate of advanced graduate studies from AIC in educational leadership. I am incredibly pleased to present Sarah Humus to the school committee, and I welcome her to the Revere Public Schools family.
Thank you. Good evening.
You got it, Carol.
Good evening. I give it wrong. I'm sort of known for not needing a microphone, so. Good evening. I'm excited and honored to be the new principal of the Lincoln Elementary School. I look forward to working collaboratively with all stakeholders to develop a culture of joy, respect, and high achievement. As an educational leader, my efforts over the last seventeen years have focused around two main themes: improving school culture and improving student learning outcomes. To do this, I lead with the guiding principle that a school should be an engaging and joyous place of learning for students, staff, and parents. My experience in both traditional and non-traditional educational settings have given me experience with a wide variety of demographics, and I work with children from pre-K through high school. I'm grateful for all my experiences, but there's no doubt in my mind that urban education is where my heart is. I began my career in Georgetown at a tiny pre-K1 elementary school, went on to teach grades five and six in Lawrence, and then grade seven in Gloucester, where I went on to become an assistant principal. My most recent position was as an assistant principal in Lowell, where we utilize PBIS as a framework for improving school culture and student learning outcomes. We did so with great success, reducing major office referrals and suspensions by over fifty percent while simultaneously improving staff morale and parents' confidence in our ability to provide a safe and rigorous learning environment. Early in my career, I wrote out a very formal teaching and learning philosophy, complete with quotes from Sapphire, Linsky, and Marshall. As I gained experience and confidence, I found that my leadership and life philosophies began to merge, and I became much less formal, but much more effective. Every single day, some days more successfully than others, I operate both personally and professionally using very specific guiding core beliefs, heavily influenced by Juan Ruiz's book, The Four Agreements. Those core beliefs and how they will guide my work at the Lincoln are as follows: being impeccable with my word, honest, clear, and direct communication, as well as a willingness to explain the logic behind decisions and to follow through on what is said, is the foundation of a mutual respectful relationship, and relationships are the foundation of effective leadership. Don't take anything personally or make assumptions. The fastest way to fail as a leader is to lead based on ego rather than heart, and so I do my best to check my ego at the door, presume positive intent, and remember that each person brings their own experiences, fears, and hopes to every situation. Taking the time to listen and value others' perspectives and opinions is imperative to developing trust and making meaningful and lasting change. Always do your best. The joys of working with children are numerous, but the weight and responsibility is immense. It is an honor to be entrusted with the academic and social-emotional education of children and to be charged with leading and supporting staff in a collaborative and effective manner, and as such, I think it imperative to give my best every single day. I'm so very grateful for the opportunity to work in Revere Public Schools, and I am ready to hit the ground, listening and learning at the Lincoln. This first year is about laying the groundwork for trust and collaborative relationships so that we may develop a shared vision aligned with the district, but also unique to Lincoln's needs and wants.
Thank you, Sarah, and on behalf of the city of Revere, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the decision to come, come to Revere. We're very excited about it, and I want to also just give a shout-out to Dr. Kelly for being able to continuously attract the best and brightest, and this is obviously clear with Sarah coming on, and we really appreciate all the great work that you've done. And finally, I will say that AC is on the way, so.
Thank you.
Get that done.
Thanks.
Next on the superintendent's report, we have our partners from Alphabet here to present about our new partnership around summer and after-school learning opportunities for students. So Adam Ellis, who is the regional manager, and Vanessa Rose, who is our direct contact in Revere and also a Revere resident, are here to tell us, answer any questions that the committee has about our new after-school partner.
Very nice to be here tonight. Alphabet is very excited to be partnering with the Revere Public Schools to be managing the before, or excuse me, the after-school programs for this upcoming fall, and then we're really excited to starting, to be starting the summer with the summer program. And just a short little explanation of who Alphabet is. Our parent company is Kaplan Early Learning, so a big supplier you might be familiar with in a lot of early learning centers and kindergartens as far as furniture, curriculum. And some time ago, about eleven years ago, actually, they got involved with before and after-school programs and started supplying particular ones exclusively, and they found that this was a great place to be in the after-school. You can impact kids' lives, you can have a lot of fun, and the people that we're, you know, building our program with have found just the same thing. So over the last three years specifically, we've grown tremendously. We've actually tripled the size of our company, being able to expand into thirteen different states, and Rhode Island and Massachusetts are part of the New England region, which I oversee, and I'm a Massachusetts resident, just to clarify that. And then Vanessa, we brought onboard earlier this spring when we were looking to begin building the program here in Revere, and she brings a ton of knowledge from a licensing perspective and also from managing her own after-school program, which was also six schools, just like the Revere Public Schools as well, too. So we just wanted to leave some opportunity if anyone did have any questions or particular things that you were interested in knowing about our program. So I'll just kind of wrap up by saying our program's a little bit different than a typical after-school program because of our connections and our resources for enrichment, so we will actually be dropping in our enrichment hour into every day of after-school for the students. So specifically, we'll be teaching them a language every week, such as Mandarin or French, Spanish, American Sign Language. This past year, we did Portuguese because of the Brazil Olympics. We tried to capitalize on that. We'll also be adding in STEM enrichments, such as teaching your kids coding, robotics programming. We'll be doing digital arts. We'll also be doing fitness with the kids. We'll be teaching other sort of arts, like dramatic arts and cartooning. So we're really looking forward to bringing a lot of enrichments, which standalone would cost the parent or the school to pay for quite a bit, but by packaging them all together, we're able to offer you guys a lot of things for your kids. So we're really excited to be a part of Revere.
Any members have any questions? Mr. Ferenti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few questions.
Absolutely.
Basically, is your program open fifty-two weeks a year?
So, yes. So we will have some breaks, I think, right in between the summer and the start of school, obviously is a big time, and I believe that we have some school breaks that we're going to do as well. So we'll be able to offer programming for professional development days, early release days, a lot of the days where parents will need care.
So you will be open vacation weeks?
Yes. Yep. Any days that we can get into the school, we can offer programming.
Now, were the fees charged pretty much the same from the prior administration to yours?
I believe so. When we were, when we accepted, or when the bid was accepted, we based off of what was placed out by the school, so we matched that when we were setting up the fee costs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gravellisi.
I just had one thing to Mr. Ferenti's question, sorry. So under the contract with the RFP, the fees are required to stay the same for the first year of the contract as they were this past year. So the cost to parents remains exactly the same for the school year seventeen, eighteen, as it was in this current school year, and that was part of the contract that we made when we set it out.
Do they have a three-year contract?
They do have a three-year contract.
So they could expect to raise the following two years?
It's possible that the rates could go up the following two years, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Arigo. It was my understanding that the current staff that was involved with the after-school program in Revere would have the opportunity for employment with your company. Was that true, was that fact? Were there many employees hired from our schools?
Yeah, we've had many staff that, oh, I'm sorry. That doesn't really bode well for technology, me not being able to figure that out.
Last time I was trying to figure it out, too.
So, yes, so we had any, we had anyone apply just like for a regular process that they would, and we actually did a call available to all Revere employees who were currently in the program to get a little information, decide if it was right for them, and, yes, we did interview many people who were interested, but we left it up to them if they wanted to apply.
And of those, were those employees hired, those ones that did choose to interview? Were there?
Yeah, yeah, and we had many, there was many people we talked to. So some people we talked to, and it wasn't a good fit, they kind of, as they learned more about us, we explained how we're a little bit different, and for many, we've met great staff members who are very excited to have in place, and a lot of parents will see their faces and recognize their faces, so that'll be good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravellisi. Ms. Ty.
I'd love to hear from Vanessa, since she is the one with whom we'll be dealing on a day-to-day basis, and I'd like to know a little bit about your background, and did you work in the after-school program that we were operating before, or are you a new hire for Alphabet?
So I am a new hire for Alphabet, and I've actually been in school age before and after-school programs as well as summer for thirteen years now. It was actually my first job in high school, and I started out in Malden, and I just loved the after-school program, so, and it wasn't even my major in college or anything like that, and I'm still here, so that's what, you know, just brought me here, and I just, I haven't been able to leave school age since. So, and I started out as an assistant in the school age programs and then all the way up to like manager, so I've been in every single position from the start.
What do you anticipate might be your greatest challenge?
I just think the greatest challenge here will just kind of be, like, just sometimes when you carry staff over, they're great, I've met with a bunch of them, it just kind of like, sometimes they'll say, you know, "We did this," and you want to get them more open to try new things, and they're like, "Well, this worked," and, you know, "But maybe they might like this," or, you know, "You might not like this," and it's just being more open, you don't have to stick with what you're doing, like, where, you know, we can do other things, and a lot of the parents have been very open to it, and I've spoke to many, and we're really excited.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. Any other committee members?
Thank you both very much. We're really excited for the partnership.
Thanks, we are as well. Thank you.
The next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation on early college and dual enrollment programs, and Tiffany Curry, who is our Extended Learning Opportunity Coordinator and College and Career Readiness Coordinator at the high school, is here, and I know that she has some of her students, who I'll let Ms. Curry introduce them, who are going to present some information on what's happening right now at Revere High School and what the future of external learning opportunities will be for our high school students. Tiffany?
I'm going to just introduce our students first. Why, thank you. I just want to take a moment to introduce our students who just finished their finals and came back to school tonight to share with you: Amani Matar, Megan McGuire, Olivia Colomore, and Catherine Gutierrez-Arego. Thank you. So our presentation's on the screen for you to take a peek at, but basically, I am just about done with my first year, so I'm coming from Lowell as well. Very grateful for the opportunity here. So when we're looking, thank you. So when we're looking at our external learning opportunities, we're really looking at anytime, anywhere learning, and we have several different components that I want to briefly share with you. With our internship program, we have students working in the real world in different career fields, really designed to meet their personal learning goals. Our dual enrollment program is an early college program where students get to take college courses at Salem State University, North Shore Community College, Bunker Hill Community College, and Benjamin Franklin Institute of Technology right now, and those provide the students the opportunity to get out, take a real live college course, and get some experience about that, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, and the students will share some of their experiences. Also, we have some great special programs that we're partnering with MGH Youth Scholars Program, which is a program that our freshmen participate, begin, and they follow through all the way through their four years of high school and have a variety of opportunities and support through learning about the medical field and careers. We have a new partnership with MGH, the Ocular Regenerative Medicine Program, where we have the opportunity for three interns this summer. They're paid internships where they're there for about six to eight weeks, earning a thousand dollars, working directly with a mentor doctor. And then again, other programs like the Power of No Chelsea Courthouse Program, the Posse Foundation Gateway to College, and as you can see. We also partner with the Career Center, and they have been coming once a week to work with students on their resumes, assisting them with summer and part-time employment, as well as providing some career research and college and career workshops for them. We're moving rate fast and furiously into the summer programs with the Let's Get Ready SAT Prep Program and a college boot camp, as well as several different internships that students will be participating in. And then we have other external learning opportunities. We have students going on college tours, we have college reps visiting us, employer visits, programs like Year Up, Job Corps, the Career Center, and a new Alumni Career Speaker Series, as well as different apprenticeship information. So dual enrollment, briefly, college credits are free. We earn college credits, making college more affordable in the long run. We want our students to accelerate their area of interest through learning, but really, we want our students to see what it's like to be a college student while they're in high school. They get to start college ahead of their classmates and then transfer those dual enrollment credits right into the college that they're choosing to attend. Our students gain confidence as learners, and they see themselves as future college students, and that's a really important piece for some of our first-generation students to kind of have that picture that they actually can be college students. Students have the option of building their dual enrollment course into their four-period schedule here during the school day, or they can take that as a fifth class, and then again, it's reflected on their high school transcript and in their high school grade point average. Those are the schools that we're working with. UMass Boston has been added for a summer opportunity for students. Just some brief statistics. We're looking at Bunker Hill Community College. We had seventeen students in the fall, eighteen in the spring, eight for the summer due to limited funding. In the fall, right now, I have about fifty students. They haven't been enrolled in their courses yet because that's still an ongoing process with the college, but I would guess that we're going to have around forty students for the fall. Salem State University, we're fortunate, we have about twenty-eight students already registered for the fall, and that's continuing to grow, and then North Shore, Benjamin Franklin, and UMass Boston, we're still working on those numbers. So Salem State, new this year, we had the opportunity to register our students for Summer Session Two, which was a great advantage. In the past, Session One started May twentieth, which is when our kids are still in school, so it was really difficult for them to take advantage of that. So we worked with the Dean of Enrollment, and we also had the opportunity for students to take Summer Session Two, which begins in July through August. This is a slide that I shared with students and parents. We have a fall course, Critical Reasoning, it's a philosophy course, and that will take place right here at the high school in partnership with Winthrop High School. And then Bunker Hill Community College, we've had a great opportunity in partnership with them over the years. We have students taking classes and getting books for free. Students take the Accuplacer for college placement, that took place last week right here at the high school, and we're looking at enrolling students in more courses that they choose. So it's more of their interest area. We work very closely with the dual enrollment coordinator over there, so students have a lot of opportunities to select their own courses. North Shore Community College offers a set number of courses to us, and that's a new partnership as of this January. Again, they're free courses. Students went over to the Lynn Campus and took the Accuplacer and had a campus tour. We're working on the fall courses. They're not out yet, but we'll be registering those students prior to the start of the new school year. Then we have a new partnership program, Gateway to College, and that is between Revere High School and North Shore Community College for the 2017-2018 year. We'll be selecting about five students to work at a college-based dual-credit program designed specifically for students who have left high school or are significantly behind in credits, and they're unlikely to finish high school. So it's really a second chance to earn a high school diploma while earning college credit as well, leading towards an associate's degree or a certificate program. So I think this is really an important piece for students. I hope that students understand the opportunity ahead to take a college course, and I stress the responsibilities upon them by signing up for it, that attendance and academic rigor, they need to check emails daily, and again, the communication piece is so important between the high school as well as the college. I also tell the students that, you know, they think it's free, but I remind them that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is paying for this through our tax dollars, and therefore, it's free to you, but there's an obligation to, you know, understand that a $1,200 course is a fantastic opportunity at Salem State University. Our students follow Revere High School and the college policies, including dropping courses and following all deadlines. They return the books that they're loaned, free of charge, and really, the key to success for all of our students is communication between the professor, myself, and the coordinators at each of the colleges. So next piece is why should a student participate in an internship? I've seen such tremendous success and growth from the students that have participated in internships there, here this year, and I'll have the students share a little bit about that. But really, it's about learning about the real world of work, figuring out what you might want to do, what you might not want to do as a career. I've had students hired for summer employment from their internships, they're gaining network contacts, and really just helping them understand some of the soft skills that go along with So the way the student, the internship program works with the students, really, I'm working with these students directly to help them figure out what their individual career goals are. It's a course that students are registered in with an academic requirements, weekly journals, we're looking at Twenty-First Century Career Skills Assessments, site supervisor evaluations, resume career, resume creation, and career readiness training. So they meet five days a week, one period a day, and some of them are actually in extended time, replacing their elective. Students are responsible for their own transportation, and they complete an application with permission slips as well. And internship success, in the fall, we had twenty-eight students, in the spring, we had fifty-nine students, and I foresee it growing tremendously for next year. The internship applications that I've received now are approximately a hundred, and I foresee more coming in. So we're working on a pilot program for senior internships next year, and this is kind of a partnership with the SEL Committee, School Improvement Team, and some teachers. We're trying to design a program that's going to allow students, our seniors, to spend a little more time at their internship in a real-world setting, and that's something that we're continuing to develop, and we'll be looking for some new partners in the community to participate in that opportunity. And there's just a couple lists of sites that we're working with. And I am often asked by parents, because they're signing these permission slips, so I'll get phone calls or emails, you know, I'm really just asking for parents to support their students, to link to our schoolage page, to read and see what's going on at the school, stay informed. If you're unsure about the opportunity, ask questions, and I've had a lot of parents connect with me about that, and I think it's really provided an opportunity for the students to grow more, they're having more conversations about their internship and how that connects to their future career goals. And most importantly, how can the Revere community support our internship program? We're always looking to have new internships, partner with new agencies, and partner with new businesses, developing a job description that's really going to help our students learn about what the opportunities are out there, and we're hoping to have two events where we're bringing in our fall, in the fall, some community partners to learn more from our students about what the internship program means to them, as well as a showcase in the spring to share our successes. So I'd like to ask our students if they would come up and just share a little bit about their experience so far this year. Yep, come on. Amani.
So, the dual enrollment experience, just overall, doing the dual enrollment program and being a part of it, has helped me broaden my horizons when it comes to college, knowing what I'm in for, knowing what it takes to actually keep up with the classwork, keep up with the amounts of homework the professor gives you. It's quite an experience to be sitting in a classroom surrounded by people way older than you, thirties-year-olds, forty-year-olds, even seventy-year-olds sometimes. And in my very first class that I took, I've taken three classes so far, my first class, it was English Writing One, and I grew very close with the students in that class. The work was quite difficult, and they were amazed at how I handled it with this ease, and they didn't realize I was a high school student until further on, later in the class, when I informed them about it, and they were just in shock. They couldn't believe that a sixteen-year-old could write like I did, especially with the beard, they thought I was a thirty-year-old. Didn't really help. And I just felt like, in their minds, they were just envious towards me, that they couldn't have a chance to sort of excel when they were in high school, which is why I feel like the dual enrollment program should be more heavily focused on when it comes to the, you know, committee and such, but yeah.
So I intern in a pre-K class at Lincoln, and I chose to do an internship not only because I want to go into the teaching field, but because... because I want to go into the teaching field, but because it got me out of my comfort zone, which I really needed this year. And it gave me like a sense of responsibility and time management, which my father always tells me I need. And it really just like helped me work with other people better, and it's helped me decide what I actually want to do, and it's like helped me understand that I really want to go into teaching, which helped me.
One of the first classes I took at Salem State was the Intro to Criminal Justice, and it was so interesting how they taught you how to solve a crime by fingerprints and making connections and stuff like that. So the fall, the next year, when it came time to make my classes, I signed up for classes like Biotech and looking at AP classes and stuff like that, because I found out I had such a strong love for STEM. And this year, this summer, I'll be taking another STEM course, and next year, I enrolled in the AP Environmental class, and I'm just so excited for the rigor and everything else because I know I'm prepared for it due to all of the other college classes I'm already
Hello. My name's Catherine, and I am currently taking my seventh dual enrollment class. So I'm almost practically my first year at Bunker Hill. Before, in middle school, I used to be a huge procrastinator. I would do my science fair the day before it was due, and it did not go well at all. But ever since taking the dual enrollment program, it has completely helped me with time management. Like now, when I get home, I do my work. I'm like, I separate my week, I'm like, okay, I have to study for my exam that's coming up this Tuesday, and then, you know, I have to make the flashcards for the next test and so on. So it's really helped in that aspect, and just simply meeting how other college students are as well, it might seem that they still have that high school mentality. For example, when I took my College Writing One class, there was a woman, she was in her twenties or so, but she would come to class late. She didn't pass in her work, she would leave class early. So it was different for me, being a high school student, thinking that even, you know, and you're in college and you see the standards that the professor sets up on the first day, just them disregarding that. So I think that it's important that, you know, you don't follow that example, but instead, you know, you follow what your professor says, and the same that teachers here in the high school says. You know, they tell you all the time that in high, pardon me, in college, it will be much more rigorous, and it definitely is. And some of those students also think that, you know, because they don't have enough of the money, they think for college that they won't make it. So I think this program provides such a great opportunity for them to worry less about going into debt, so being able, like, for example, me, almost being able to finish their first year in college.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Curry or our amazing students? Mr. Feranti?
Thank you, Ms. How many credits are each course? Are they like three credits, four credits? And secondly, how does it get affected, you know, how does it get into their CUM for high school?
So most, most courses are three credits, some are four, depending if it has a lab component. They are put into, directly into their, on their transcript. So it would say Salem State College Writing One and their grade, and calculate it into their grade point average.
So they actually have a little bit more of an advantage with their CUM because they have more classes than the average person are doing?
That it's a weighted course.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Ms. Ty?
Thank you. So when they get the credit, the College One credit from Salem, does that, I mean, I assume it does not then push them automatically towards Salem, that they will, can be going to any other class, for example, BC or BU or whatever? And I should think that just the fact that they have taken it then would make them a much more valuable student at a different college. Is, have you had any experience in making sure that that will count on their college? In other words, will they accept the college credits?
Yeah, I actually just reached out to Tufts University last week in regards to a Fall Course. So Tufts has a policy where they will not accept a college, will not accept college dual enrollment credits if the course is only with high school students. So they would prefer a student to take a class that meets with college students. So it could be, just like the student said, a seventy-year-old, a twenty-year-old, a thirty-year-old, and that's just their policy. So all of the colleges have different policies on dual enrollment, but for the most part, I advise students to take classes that will kind of cover some of their general electives. Some of the humanities electives are great ones to take because Intro to Music will cover a humanities requirement as part of your general education curriculum. So, you know, my experience working with a variety of colleges and admissions connections has really helped direct our students to take classes that will fit their needs.
So they actually choose the course that they wanted, or, why did you choose those? Why did you choose?
Why did you choose the, first, it's the College Writing One you both choose? You both chose?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why did you pick those? Did you feel that you needed that? Because clearly, you were above some of the other people in your class. If you don't want to answer, you don't have to.
No, not necessarily. I decided to take the class since I have a personal interest in writing, so I just wanted to see what college, what college expects my writing to be, which is what drove me to take the class.
Excellent. Thank you.
No problem.
When I was choosing my classes, I first focused, well, I was thinking I should choose based on my interests, but then I went online, well, I took with Bunker Hill and with Salem State, but I've taken more with Bunker Hill. So with Bunker Hill, I went into their, their general requirements, and I saw the different areas that they had, and in one of them, College Writing One and Two are requirements. So that's why I decided to choose the writing class.
And now for Megan. Will you do an internship again next year, or will you take a college class, or will you do the same internship, or would you, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, next year, I don't have room in my schedule. I have two APs, so it takes up both semesters. If I did have the chance in my schedule to take one, I would definitely take another internship, but unfortunately, I don't have room.
Would it be the same kind of internship in a school?
Yeah, I would definitely work with kids again, because it's what I want to do. Yeah, and I'm doing dual enrollment in the fall as a fifth class. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
And how, and how about you? Would you, would you be doing?
Me, too, Olivia.
Yes, I hope to enroll in a class this fall, and I was hoping to do an internship in the spring semester, periods three and four, an extended one with the aquarium, because I thought it would match well with my AP Environmental and everything else, so, yeah.
That would be really exciting.
Yeah.
Well, good luck to all of you. Very impressive. Anyone else? Sure, Ms. Kelly?
So just to wrap up, first, I want to compliment these students for taking advantage of these opportunities before you. Your hard work will certainly pay off, and you guys are definitely aligned for great futures. And I hope that all four of you, I know that it sounds like Megan's going to come back here and teach. I would challenge the other three of you to think about what you're going to come back and do for the city of Revere, so that we can continue to work with you when you finish your college careers. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Garcia, who's here in the audience, for his leadership at the high school and helping make sure that these programs are in place and available to students. And even if we, if we look back as recently as three or four years ago, we didn't have nearly as many programs as Ms. Curry described here tonight, and especially the internship program has grown exponentially. And I want to mention that we would not be successful with that program if it wasn't for our community partners and all of the businesses and the mayor's office and the schools and the police, the fire department, everybody who has been willing to take these kids in and entertain them as, through the internships, and really teach them to be college and career-ready. So we very, very, we are very, very thankful for all of those community partners who have given of their own time to help these kids achieve their goals. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly?
The next item on the superintendent's report is the Grading Practices Committee and Core Values. This is work that you'll recall was one of the, one of the goals for the superintendent's office through our entry plan, which was developed in collaboration with parents, teachers, students, and others. So one of the big pieces of work that came out of all those focus group discussions was the need to focus on assessment of and assessment for student learning. And so we developed a goal to work on that, and most of the work this year focused on really taking inventory and assessing where we are as a district, what our beliefs are as a district, what the pockets of work look like. And our, two of our curriculum directors, Dr. Christina Porter, who is our Humanities Director, and Mr. Matthew Costa, who is our STEM Director, have led the way with this work over the last school year, and they've worked with four separate teams of teachers around these different areas. And so they're here tonight to share with us kind of a recap of what the year looked like and, you know, what work was completed over the last year, and also start to foreshadow what's coming next. So I'm going to pass this over to Christina and Matt, and I'm noticing this is not showing the whole slide. Do you know why that is? I can see it on my screen. Let me see if I can adjust that a little bit while you begin your introduction. That's really weird.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So we're here tonight, as you mentioned, to just provide an update on our Grading Practices Subcommittee work. If you want to jump ahead to that next slide?
Sure.
So I'm going to start by walking us through the process. So Matt and I are both very proud that we have the voices of so many educators in the district involved in this work. So this work actually began with the full district PD Day last August. So every educator in the district attended a session on grading practices. During that session, the first draft of the grading practices document was shared. We have the most updated version of that document to share with all of you in a little bit. Educators then shared their warm and cool feedback with, on big pieces of chart paper. So from there, Dr. Macaba emailed everyone in the RPS district to see who wanted to be on our Grading Practices Committee, and Matt and I held our first committee last October. So at that meeting, which was in this room, we took all of that chart paper, looked at all of the feedback, so really hearing the voices of all of the educators and different school leaders. We did a gallery walk, and we looked for trends from the feedback. So from there, Matt and I took that feedback that the committee kind of compressed, and we made some edits to the grading practices draft. We did things like making sure the language was inclusive for all grade levels and to make sure that we had more clarity around pieces like retakes and revisions. So then, we shared that with the RELB. We made a few additional edits, so that was in November. And then we, the RELB approved the final document for this year. We still call it a working draft that we're going to share with you in a little bit at their May sixteenth meeting.
So on this slide, we have the educators from across the district who have volunteered to serve in our committee. So we meet twice a month. We meet Monday afternoons from 4:15 to 5:15, and Tuesday during the school day. So as you can see, we have educators from all eleven schools who have volunteered to work with us. We have teachers and administrators.
It's coming up right on TV, so I'm going to do it this way.
So one of the things that we worked with, we meet with all the educators together. Lots of times, they're working in grade band subgroups. One of their first actions was to develop short-term and long-term goals. So long-term goals, we're looking at our work to improve and refine our grading practices as a five-year goal to get exactly where we want to be. So if you look at the K2 team and their long-term goals and short-term action steps, a lot of it is just developing clarity and consistency with our grading practices, having that horizontal and vertical alignment, making sure that students and families have clarity with what students have mastered at a different grade, and also as some of those softer skills that we know are so important for students to have, and we refer to that as habits of work, like their perseverance, their preparedness for school, their leadership, their collaboration skills. So we're looking at making sure that that feedback is aligned and it's clear across grade levels.
So here are the goals for grades three to five. So again, like Matt mentioned, we met as a whole group, but we wanted to make sure that educators from across the district were working to align similar goals. That's part of the work. So this is the three to five teams overarching and short-term goals and focus. So they were working on extending that standard-based report card, which already exists, at early elementary up through fifth grade. Again, looking to develop consistency and focusing on student growth and mastery of content standards as well as habits of work. So that idea of really looking forward, and you'll see when we get to the middle and high school, of separating out students' academic achievement from their habits of work, their preparedness for class, the timeliness in which they turn and work.
So again, you'll notice that there's similarities between what we saw at K2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. Again, we're looking at that consistency with our grading practices across different subject matters and across schools. And again, looking to separate out a student's mastery of the goals for a course with their habits of work. And we're looking to provide that better feedback to students and their families, so students know where they're doing well and where they have next steps for further growth.
So the high school has been doing a lot of work on competency-based learning. The high school was, Revere High School was really leading the work with the habits of work, which you'll see was also echoed in the middle school. That was something that the middle school team really picked up on and wanted to do more work with. High school teachers have also been doing a lot of work with the core competencies. So again, that idea of teaching core competencies, but also making sure that we're teaching students their content standards that they have to master, and again, separating out all of that from students' habits of work.
So as we mentioned, we view this as long-term goals, and, you know, as our teachers have collaborated in professional learning group to calibrate their feedback and make sure that grades across different courses are aligned, we're looking at furthering that work next year with our district-wide PD and having an umbrella theme of grading practices and student assessment. So we would imagine that we'd want our teachers to be digging into the Habits of Work rubric and looking at that and discussing their pilot of that document. Maybe some sessions would have teachers unpacking big ideas for different courses as teachers have received new standards in different areas, and looking at what it would mean for students to demonstrate mastery of those big ideas, and also just being more creative with some of our assessments, that there's a place for those traditional tests and quizzes, but also looking at opportunities for performance-based assessments in front of our students to give them different opportunities to demonstrate that mastery.
So we're going to hand down our draft of the Core Beliefs and Grading Practices document that has been, again, you know, worked on over the course of this year. So, you know, right now, the primary purpose of this document is to guide the work of our committee and the district in regard to revisiting and revising grading practices. We realize, and we haven't spoken a lot right now, that there is an entire process of communicating all these changes as we make them to parents, caregivers, community members. Some of the systems we're talking about, like competency-based learning, are very different than what families are used to and students are used to in terms of receiving feedback. So that is something that we spend time talking about, and we've also read a great body of research on. that we spend time talking about. We've also read a great body of research on this and looked at other districts who've made similar changes.
So here, we just pulled out a couple of key quotes. So the document's broken up into two parts. We wanted to highlight our beliefs. And the first just highlights our beliefs about the growth mindset and how it's important for students to, for us to remember that students learn at different rates and in different ways, and that we want to continuously message to our students that intelligence is malleable and that it's important for students to work harder, and that will in fact help them become smarter. And then, as we mentioned a couple of times already, that it's important for students to be assessed using multiple methods and that students have multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. Obviously, at times, some content might be harder for a student to demonstrate mastery of than others. And the goal is for students to demonstrate that mastery of essential content.
So then we picked out, there's actually four key practices on the document. And then under each of the practices, you have some sub-points, but we just wanted to pull out the four sort of bigger ideas. So again, believing that, you know, students and teachers need to have that balance of formative and summative assessment. Summit of assessment, because if we really do a great job at designing those assessments, they should be measuring where students are in relation to key content and competence that we've taught, should hold the most weight. Effective effort should be consistently messaged to students. So that ties into that idea of habits of work and continuing to work with students as they develop those over time. Right now, not just here, but I think pretty much everywhere, grading is something that's still very inconsistent across teachers, across schools. So we're really, really focusing on the idea that it's good for students and families and parents and caregivers and everybody if we have more consistent, shared practices in regards to grading and assessment.
And that's it. If there are any questions?
Any questions?
If I may.
Ms. Thai?
Of course, this is a very important, I remember how difficult it always was for me to correct your essay, for example, which was superior to other people's, and to be consistent and apply, because in those days, we didn't have these rubrics that we were using. You were just hoping to use your best professional judgment. So at the end there, you had a slide or something that said that there are times when you do need to use that professional judgment. But I assume now that those times are severely limited.
So something that was really important to us when we were creating this document was to make sure that teacher autonomy is still respected, but we keep bringing it back to what's good for students. So I know for me, a lot of my, like, summative assessments, if they're quarterly, we do use the same rubrics across the district. The tests that we've created with the five district partnership and Master Connect, those rubrics are all the same. It allows us to look at student growth and performance across multiple schools and districts. So I think that as long as we're doing a good job communicating and working with teachers on why we're doing that, that is important to have consistency. But then there's also a place, like, we really tried to stress formative assessment. So that's really a lot of, you know, individual classroom teacher based on the performance of students. We want to respect that as well.
This is great work. And the old adage, I mean, the old people saying that Mrs. Smith, that Mr. Smith's a hard grader and Mrs. Smith's just an easy grader and all you go. This is really going to bring everybody on the same ship. So I think you're doing great work. When we, when we go as one, then you can't be saying, pointing those fingers. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Porter, Mr. Costa, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So that concludes the superintendent's report. There is one item left there, which was inadvertently on the agenda. That was actually a topic for the consent calendar, which was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. And I'm sure Mr. Chicarella will update his team and their families on where they stand. I would, I don't know if we could take a recess at this time for, two-minute recess?
Motion for a two-minute recess?
Second.
Two-minute recess. Regular order? Thank you. Next on our agenda is Student Representative Report. And unfortunately, we don't have our student rep because he graduated last week, and we're very proud of the work he's done. And we look forward to who comes in for next year. So now we're moving on to public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the school committee at this time? Come right up to the podium. Please state your name, your address. And just to let you know, if we do a three-minute public participation?
Well, I mean, it's more of a question than anything.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
So my name is Deana Trowell, and I have two children in the Revere Public Schools. Oh, my address is 183 Park Ave, too, by the way. So I have two children in the Revere Public Schools. Both of them have disabilities. And one has, sorry, my voice, one has an IEP, current IEP. The other one has not been afforded as much. And my devastation was just graduated out of GMS today. So especially as I saw that his grades, his ending grades were a D, a B+, an F, an F, a D. And these were his fourth quarter grades. I am devastated that this happened. I've addressed the school on many occasions, and I was told that my son was making effective progress. And this is what I was just given. So I don't understand how this happens, how it's been allowed to happen. I've reached out to Dr. Meyer on several occasions. She has always dismissed this. I have been working with Russell Pierce. He's been trying to, he actually, I believe it was an IEE, so my son could be evaluated because there hasn't been enough, apparently, an ADHD diagnosis wasn't enough for a 504 plan for my son. And what I, what I'm getting is that he needs to complete assignments, needs to complete assignments. What else is there? Classwork not taken seriously. So these are things that I've talked to these teachers about and said, please let me know if there's anything, you know, the school's not giving him the 504 plan that he should have. And I need to know if something's wrong. And they never, they never. GMS just, you know, they, they, they lived up to their reputation, for sure. They've had a reputation for not doing well by their special education in the city, and they did it again. So I'm just, I'm not happy right now. I'm very upset that this has happened. So especially my son, one of his grades, he was, he actually excels in math. And even still, I wasn't reached out when his As, his constant As, where he's in honors, dropped down to a B+ this semester. I don't understand how that happened. I was expecting that he probably would have gotten at least an award for that, if nothing else. If he struggles in everything else, at least he excelled in math. I wasn't even notified that he was struggling at all. I don't understand how this happens.
Well, first, I'm going to say how much I appreciate you going through the proper channels, starting with Dr. Meyer and Mr. Pierce. And perhaps I am going to suggest a talk with Dr. Vidal, because if anyone can help you get on the right track, or at least bring you to where you need to be for some guidance, he is definitely the person. But again, I really do appreciate that you started where you should and came forward this way. So if maybe you and Dr. Vidal can exchange numbers and make an appointment to get together?
I would appreciate it.
I really think that will work for the best for you and your son.
I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience might want to add any information? Seeing none, we will go on to item number six. And at this time, we'll bring up the consent calendar that we have already discussed, and we just need a roll call vote. And that would be, Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
You can't.
I can't.
Okay. Because you're chairing the meeting.
Oh, I can't. So, so Doc?
Mr. Feranti? Yes. Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Consent calendar.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes. Okay. Item number seven, do we have any reports from the subcommittees? Hearing and seeing none, we go on to item number eight, old business, any old business? And number nine, new business, how about if we hear from Cheryl Cole of Aramok and her team that have waited so patiently tonight? Thank you.
Which we appreciate.
Does someone have any slides? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us. For those that don't know, I am here with my assistant director, Rebecca Kay and Maureen Cooper. And what I'm going to do is just give you a brief overview of the food service year, what we've had so far. I'm shocked to say that I can't believe it's been five years.
Wow.
Just finished our five years in Revere Public Schools. Back then, and we've been through a lot of changes since then, some things that haven't changed. Number one goal, deliver a quality, compliant meals program. We try and will continue to build district partnerships and community partnerships. And then, of course, what helps is to be able to operate a financially stable program. I'm going to talk a little bit about our performance in terms of financials. One thing that I think is really important to talk about is in terms of labor. Our district labor continues to grow every year, but yet, year over year, we do not see an increase in terms of an increase to the percentage. We're able to do that by growing participation, serving more students' meals, being able to deliver the program that we're delivering. We have not increased our food costs or our direct cost as well. So what that does is it allows us to be able to invest in the program and to continue to invest in the program. And we'll be able to talk about that a little bit later. In terms of the district for Revere, community eligibility is something that you hear a lot of school districts looking at. Revere, we are not at that point to be able to adopt that where it makes sense. It has been reviewed. The information is here. We're currently at a 48.3% direct certification percentage throughout the district. In order for us to make it so that it is a sustainable program, we would need an additional about 774 students. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, or we can address that later. In terms of meal participation, slow, steady growth is the secret to a successful program. And I am happy to say that we have seen that over our five years of partnership. I'm jumping ahead, and I apologize, to slide number 10. So when we're talking about meal participation, what you're seeing is the total average daily meals. The total average daily meals make up the breakfast meals, lunch meals, after snack programs, as well as any à la carte or catering programs. You can see, month to month, there is a little bit of a variance, usually explanations. Some months, we have more participation in our snack programs. Breakfast promotions that we held in April and May also did participate to higher participation number, contributed to higher participation numbers for the months of, months of April and May. The next slide, which addresses the breakfast, you can actually see, month over month, we are aiming to feed the same number of students, if not more. Do you want to pause and ask questions?
Is this the end of this cycle, but under this piece?
Absolutely. Okay. Over the years, I had mentioned slow, steady growth. We see approximately 1% to 2% growth in our breakfast programs year over year. In terms of lunches, a district, you can see that as well. We're between 70% to 73% on average. One thing that is not reflected in here is that our paid student participation is something that we have seen an increase in. So what that says to me is that the students that have that option of purchasing lunch are choosing to. In terms of à la carte or equivalent meals, a couple of formulas take place, but at the end of the day, you can see there is a lot of growth in September and usually December because there's a lot of district events that take place that affect our catering. But our à la carte sales on a month-to-month basis are pretty steady. And I have to mention that when it comes to à la carte, it is a very limited program that we're allowed in the state of Massachusetts. There are federal regulations, and then there's the Massachusetts regulations. So we do continue to try to do different things, but again, slow, steady growth is what we're looking for. The district does participate in after-school snack programs. We have many school sites, as well as after-school academic programs. There is a lot of variation in that participation, depending on the months, the sports, how many kids participate, and then what schools might be offering different academic programs as well. I don't know if you want to stop here. We can talk a little bit about the participation. Sure. Mr. Sinella?
With the new after-school snack meals participation, it's going to rain.
I have spoken to Vanessa from Alphabet. We will be partnering with them at the start of the school year and providing them snacks that they will offer to the students in their after-school programs.
Are they purchasing from you, or is this part of the lunch program?
As long, as long as they are able to follow the guidelines, there will be training that's done from myself and my staff. They would be reimbursable through the school meals program.
Also has, I know every year, they request more money from the federal government. Has that come through as far as reimbursement for the meal per capita?
Every year, there is usually a slight increase in terms of the federal reimbursement. State of Massachusetts, the reimbursement kind of always stays the same. But the federal government does increase, and I don't know if I'm answering your question.
No, no, you're answering it. I guess what it is, is that you've made reference that it has, sales increase would, would cover costs. So without the increase, then it's a negative flow.
Absolutely. If our costs continue to increase and the sales do not, we're not able to...
Because I read, years ago, you could sell cookies, you could sell potato chips. I mean, it was, it was, you know, cash cow.
We can sell water in terms of beverage. And again, the, help the Hunger Free Kids Act, they put down their own share of federal regulations when it comes to, you know, à la carte programs and what you can sell. Massachusetts, even prior to those federal regulations, adopted their own set, and they are very strict. Limited, again, we do what we can with it, but there is not a large variety of items we're able to offer.
Because the à la carte program was very effective, oh, four, five, six years ago, when you first came in.
That was the year that we lost it. But from a food service director point of view, I would rather see students purchasing meals than chips and other things to go with it and filling their bellies on that.
Hi, Cheryl. What does direct certification mean?
Direct? Here? Direct certi- Direct certification is a program that was adopted by the federal government about four years ago. It was offered as a trial program to a few different states, and it now has increased throughout the country. Massachusetts is in its second or third year of being eligible to apply for community eligibility. Direct certification is part of that community eligibility criteria. Any family who is receiving any type of assistance would be directly certified. There is a virtual gateway that's tied in with the Department of Education and our information systems that we are able to retrieve that data. So instead of families having to fill out free and reduced meal applications, if they are receiving any type of assistance, they are imported off of that list, considered directly certified to receive free lunch. Once a student is directly certified, those percentages are what contribute to our eligibility for community eligibility.
So if I could just add to that, in the context of some of our many recent discussions about the economically disadvantaged metric, it's the same piece that we're talking about. So these are the kids, as Cheryl mentioned, who already exist in some governmental database that identifies them as qualifying for free lunch. So those families don't need to submit forms because they are directly certified, meaning they're already on the rolls for foster care or receiving transitional assistance, you know, something of that nature. And that's why, if you look at what Cheryl just mentioned, our percentages there, which say that we are.
Forty-eight point three, I believe?
Forty-eight point three percent are much lower than we need them to be in order to qualify for community eligibility. Community eligibility would mean that we have reached a threshold where every kid automatically qualifies for free lunch in the whole district, no matter what, nobody has to give a form because we've reached that threshold. Now, just as with our reimbursement for our Chapter Seventy funding, because our direct certification number is so much lower than our actual poverty number, it's a little bit misrepresentative. So that's why Cheryl's saying, yes, we have forty-eight percent who are directly certified. It doesn't get us the number we need for it to be to go community eligibility, just like it doesn't get us the number that we know is true for how many kids we actually have living in poverty in the city of Revere. Carol?
If I could follow up on that question, because Cheryl and you said, we'd need seven hundred and seventy-four more students.
Based on our current enrollment?
Okay, so, well, I hope we don't have seven hundred and seventy-four more students. But I, the number I keep remembering, Dr. Kelly, is the number we were talking about, that we lost the reimbursement for two thousand two hundred and twenty-three, or whatever it was. And so I'm not a math person, as you know, so I'm trying to figure out, how do those two balance out?
So in addition to the kids who we know are directly certified, we have other kids who live in poverty and who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And those kids, because they don't exist on any database that are already, is present in different government agencies, they bring us a form that identifies certain information about the family, including income, number of members of the household, the information like that. And we use federal guidelines to verify, first, the authenticity of the information, but also whether or not that child qualifies for free and reduced lunch. When we add those kids to the kids who are directly certified, we end up at about an eighty percent of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So, you know, if the state rolls were a little bit more accurate in terms of counting how many kids actually live in poverty, we would have far more kids receiving, would get far more reimbursement from the government, and it would make sense for us to go for the community eligibility provision. You know, it's a really great benefit that the Department of Agriculture has developed. It just doesn't work for all districts, and unfortunately, Revere is one of them. We happen to have a large number of kids who live in poverty, but who are not, for whatever reason, seeking public assistance, whether it's through transitional assistance, public housing, other options, Medicaid, Medicare. For whatever reasons, we have large numbers of families that don't avail themselves of those benefits. And it's one of the things that we're hoping to work on as a district through our heart department, increasing staffing there so that we can help make more families aware of the benefits that they are eligible for, which will help Cheryl with her numbers, will help us with our Chapter Seventy reimbursement, and will help the kids that are living in these families that are deserving of and need the benefits.
May I just follow up on that? So if we did get through the, you know, through the legislature that understands where we are and all of the explanation that you have been doing over the last year, would we still be short seven hundred and seventy-four students? Or do you think we'd be able to break even at some?
We'd be far above that, far above that. We estimate that we have about fifteen hundred kids missing from the roles of poor. And so what we're working on, and Cheryl actually has done a lot of this work with us, along with Jim Sacuzzo and Dr. Vidal, identifying those kids that we know are eligible for state services but are not receiving them. And we know that because they're identified as qualified for free or reduced lunch, but they're not economically disadvantaged according to the Department of Education. So we are looking at those two lists, and those are the families that we're going to start working with over the summer even, but especially once the fall comes, to help them understand what's available to them and help more of them get enrolled, and the kind of programs that are going to assist both our food services program and our Chapter Seventy funding.
Thank you. I have one more question, and maybe it will come up later on. And the question was, at the high school, let's take the lunch, how much does that cost? How much does that cost a student who is lucky enough to have the money in his or her pocket?
We are at two dollars and fifty cents.
Two fifty, and what is it that we get reimbursed from the federal government per mail?
For a free reimbursement?
Yes, a free.
This is one thing I didn't refresh myself on. I believe it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, you just can't hold me to it. I'm going to say it's about three dollars and eighteen cents, I believe.
I knew it was more than, so.
It is.
In a sense.
Yep.
It's the free and reduced that are subsidizing the individual payment.
I'm going to.
I just didn't know by how much.
There is a requirement under the DESI that we have to follow by, and it's called Paid Lunch Equity, and it's a form that needs to be filled out. And what we need to do is ensure that our paid and reduced meals are at the right price, that our free meals are not compensating, subsidizing it. So every year, there is a form that needs to be filled out. We currently are still okay, and I forecast that next year we will be, because the way the formula works, it says that any non-federal funds, so many state reimbursements or state surplus funds, we add into that formula, which is why we are still okay at two dollars and fifty cents. But the reality is, is once we go over that point, we would need to introduce a price increase.
Well, I hope we don't have to do that, but.
I hope not either.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We have, for this part, one more question, and that's from Ms. Gravellisi.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Cheryl, you did mention, which is a positive thing, that the participation of students that pay out of pocket has increased over the past few years, which actually, you know, kudos to you, because I know there was a big decline. You came in right when the Healthy Kids Hunger Free Act was implemented, and nationwide, there was a big decrease in participation. So my question to you would be, do you have, do you have any data on like the number, like how much it's increased?
It's a little over one percent.
Okay.
And listen, an increase is an increase?
It is, yes.
We have to look at it like that? But there's a lot of reasons for that, too. I honestly do believe that the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and those regulations, a lot of it is about educating our students. So what we had five years ago was a group of students who, their habits were formed. What we're seeing now, as students are coming up to the middle school and high school level, they're used to the whole grain, they're used to all of these things that have been, I don't want to say forced upon them through the school meals program.
Exactly.
But it's happening.
Right.
Whereas before, we used to have to encourage our students to take fruits and vegetables. If you see a cafeteria, the kids just automatically do.
Right, at that point, five years ago, it was implemented too fast, too quick. So, you know, it's nice to see that the mindset of the students is leaning toward the healthier food.
And I do have to say that after five years, we have finely tuned machines, great systems in place that are allowing us to operate with the same amount of great district labor. I do want to say that because we do have great teams out there. But because we have all those systems in place, we're also able to do a little bit more. And that's what we hope to continue to do.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the questions, but I'm not sure which slide we ended on, so do you know? We're at page, slide fifteen, I believe. Ooh, moving. And basically, what this does is just give you an overview of how we build our menus. One of the things I said about those systems in place, it is important that when we operate with the cycle menu, that we can use as a base menu, what we're ensuring is that it's cost-effective, it's labor-friendly, it's based on student acceptability, and it also gives us flexibility within that core menu to be able to do different things. It also minimizes food waste. It also allows us to utilize the USDA commodity dollars that are offered to the district because we're able to build the menus around those offerings. The commodities are a lot different. What's interesting is when the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act came out, they were still offering peaches and corn syrup. So the commodities program has come a long way, and with that, I'm sure the cost of food is more expensive, too. But what the USDA has done is, yes, the offerings are a little bit lower, but they're a lot better, so we can utilize them more. The Department of Defense came out with a program, they call it the DOD program, two years old, I believe. And what that does is that offers us to take in fresh fruits and vegetables. We really, thanks to my team also, really were able to utilize a lot of those offerings. So things that normally you couldn't afford to put into your school meals program, and I'm talking like fresh strawberries and grape tomatoes and.
Apple slices.
Apple slices, zucchini slices, summer squash, those are things that the kids are seeing because, again, we can afford to do that. And as long as we can still manage it. So to answer your question, I'm sorry, I went around in circles on that.
And we were used to.
Yep.
It was service, they were paying.
Absolutely.
You know, cheese in the mouth.
But it is a higher quality product, so a lot of time, people think of commodities, and it's like, oh, that's government peanut butter. No, it's actually, it's a whole different offering of food that we're seeing. We were speaking about Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, so USDA has, we're on slide sixteen. USDA has proposed, and.
They're numbered weird.
I'm sorry. Student experience menus, yes. So there were some proposed regulations by the USDA, and they have been accepted and will take effect next school year. And what that has done is it's allowed schools a little bit more flexibility when it comes to the whole grain requirement. It is going to allow us that if we wanted to offer non-whole grain pasta, and I'm going to use pasta as an example, our students are used to whole wheat bread and a lot of other whole wheat options. Whole wheat pasta is something that is just still a challenge when it comes to some of your menu items. So by there being this flexibility, it allows us to say, you know what, everything else we offer is going to be whole grain, but if we want to offer spaghetti and meatballs, it can, it does not have to be whole grain pasta. Another flexibility that they're allowing is for the milk. Right now, we can only offer non-fat flavored milk. They are allowing us to, once again, be able to offer a one percent milk fat flavored milk. Yes, it has to be fat-free now. But they're allowing that to come back in.
The one percent?
The one percent. So. So it is official, and we're just waiting on final documentation from the Department of Ed on that. Every month, we do have featured menu items. That is a way that we're able to introduce and incorporate new ideas. Some of them are hits, some of them not so great. The nice thing about it is we can introduce it. Our staff actually gets very involved in it, too, by offering student samples. We offer these on the secondary school level, so at our middle school and our high school, and then the ones that we get really great feedback from the kids, we'll introduce them to the elementary menus. Promotions, health and wellness. If you ever visited any of our dining environments, you are going to see messages about health and wellness, they do change monthly. I don't know if any of you have, but that is just one way that we can just make the cafeteria environment a little bit more friendly and not always the same thing showing up. We had spoken about a hot breakfast pilot, and it was introduced in March at the Lincoln School. We coordinated with walk to school Wednesdays, and so every Wednesday at the Lincoln School, students are offered a hot breakfast. We have seen a slight increase to the tune of about twenty or thirty breakfasts when it was originally introduced. It's really hard to compare May and June data right now, because what happens is as the weather gets better, the kids want to play outside, so you see a little bit less participation. I do have to say that the staff and everyone at the Lincoln School really embraced this. They were very enthusiastic, and it's something that we will continue to do.
Thank you, lady.
Yes, Mr. Sinella?
On the breakfast program. What, they used to have a waffle thing that they would have hot waffles, they would have, you know, is the grabbing bag type thing, is that going to be promoted further, when the kids come in, who comes in late or whatever, they take the breakfast back to the classroom? We have universal breakfast, correct?
Correct. We are officially free throughout the whole district now.
I don't know how many parents are aware of it, that it is, and that should be a hundred percent participation. So maybe the ones that are not coming and enjoying it, or whatever it is with the go and bag. How is the teacher's approach to it? Because if somebody comes in your classroom and there's milk, it's going to spill. If it's juice, something's going to happen. Has an effort for me to reach out to utilize that aspect of it?
We actually are at a point that we're considering introducing, we're not going to call it a breakfast in the classroom program, because a lot of people have a vision of breakfast in the classroom where you're actually delivering it right to the classroom. What we are considering is what's called a breakfast after the bell pilot, whereas the students can come in, still get their variety of items, yet bring it to the classroom with them.
So it'll be bagged, and they'll take it with them?
Absolutely. When you go with the traditional breakfast in the classroom, you're offering one menu item on Monday, different menu item on Tuesday. A lot of students, they get bored, menu fatigue. If we propose it the way that we do, and we have had, been having discussion, I think the ideal model for Revere schools, only because refrigeration is an issue, storage, you guys know we're busting at the seams in so many different ways, our cafeterias are the same way, so it is a model that would work, and I am looking to get it funded through Aramok, so keep you posted on that.
Mr. Feranti?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Cheryl, well, we did the pilot program for the Lincoln, two questions. Are we going to continue it next year, and are we looking to do it at any other schools?
We are going to continue it next year. And in terms of continuing it at any other schools. And in terms of continuing it at any other schools, that is something that we would need to have a conversation with the principal. I don't think it's a decision that I should make. But it's something that some schools can handle. And again, a lot of our programs, it might work at one school, but not necessarily at another. And we need to look at what schools we might be introducing that breakfast-after-the-bell concept at as well.
So, we're going to do it every Wednesday at the Lincoln?
Every Wednesday at the Lincoln.
Okay, thank you.
As long as our new principal still supports that, which I'm sure she will. Because it really, it has, the kids are very excited about it there.
Dr. Kelly?
And just to follow up on that, it is something that we have had a positive response to and something that we would like to expand to other schools for that reason. We know that if the kids at the Lincoln School like it, it's incredibly likely that the kids at all the other schools will like it as well. So, we are tying this in as part of the concept with the breakfast-after-the-bell program and figuring out how, if, and how we can make that work so that maybe each school would have a hot meal at least once a week for breakfast. But that's, the other piece of that is that there is added cost to a hot meal compared to a cold meal, not only in terms of the product that's being prepared, but also in terms of staffing to prepare the hot meal, which takes more work. It's not something that you can prep largely the night before and then have it ready to go like you would a cold meal. So, but we are working on all of this. I do want to give a shout-out to our parent-teacher organization. The Districtwide PTO is where this idea of piloting a hot breakfast came from. So, I want to thank the parents who participate in that for even bringing this idea to us and, you know, so that we could pilot it at the Lincoln School and see how we could expand beyond that.
So, the next slide. We're talking about student dining environments. One of the things that's important every year that we look at our facilities and say, what do we need? What investments can we make? Which is why it's so important for us to run a program that we're able to reinvest year after year. Garfield Elementary and Garfield Middle School received all-new serving line equipment last year. It was original line equipment, it was very dated. There were a lot of repairs that were pending. So, through, you know, the program, we were able to reinvest into those serving lines. But it didn't end at that. The Garfield Elementary and Middle School had line refrigeration, but our Beauchamp School and Lincoln School did not. So, working with Carl and our facilities people, we were actually able to remove that line refrigeration from the old Garfield equipment and relocate it to our Lincoln and Beauchamp School equipment. So, even though that equipment over there is still original, at least they are now able to have refrigeration. And with that, what we're able to do is offer our kids more variety, more fresh vegetables, more fruits. The next slides are just giving you some pictures of some of our serving areas. Thank you. Next time? I'm going to jump ahead to my page is 29. So, it talks about community support. So, one of the things that I mentioned at the beginning that's important is that we do develop a partnership, Aramoc and the city of Revere, and Revere Public Schools. So, whenever we're given the opportunity, we want to help out. So, a couple of things, Garfield Community Playground, Thanksgiving Breakfast. There was recently a playground built at the Lincoln School. And I am very fortunate to be able to fund some district initiatives. We were able to support, once again, the Health and Wellness Fair at the Hill School. Lincoln Elementary School had a couple of projects. Seacoast High School, something that we just introduced to those students, was to offer them a Serve Safe certification course. I actually just administered a test to a couple of students last night. Fingers crossed that they passed. But the idea behind that is that those students are able to bring something with them once they graduate.
Can I add to that, Cheryl?
Please, yes.
So, and one other piece I'd like to add on, these kids who did the Safe Serve training at Seacoast High School, we were able to work with City Councilor Patrick Keefe, through Legal Seafoods, who have provided interviews to five students in relation to this program to do, have actual jobs for the summer at Legal Seafoods. And one of the things that makes them an appealing candidate on the application is the fact that they had the Safe Serve training with Cheryl. So, it all comes together, true community effort.
One of the things that was our summer project last year, along with many, was a transformation of our faculty dining area, formerly known as the Retro Cafe. For those of you that have visited it recently, you can see the change. But it was a very large dated space. And one of the things that we really wanted to incorporate at the back end of it was a cooking area. And we did make that come true. And I have to say that on every Friday, Maureen, and when I'm available, and our life skills students, we go out back there, we roll up our sleeves, and we cook. And I can't even tell you about what a wonderful experience that has been, not only for our students, but for us as well. Not only are we teaching the kids cooking skills, but they have gone, and all of this was done through a grant, but they have gone on a shopping excursion at the supermarket. There was a scavenger hunt involved. So, they're learning math skills, measuring, cooking, having fun, also educating about healthy eating, of course. But the key part to that, too, is at the end, they have to clean up. That is a program we are going to continue. And with that cooking area, we are looking to incorporate next year. We'll be working with Dr. Garcia to introduce cooking classes to our, some of our Revere High School students.
Cheryl, I just want to add, I ran into Brandon at his job at Market Basket, and he brought up how much work Maureen puts in with them. And he started telling, he's a bagger at Market Basket. And the woman he was bagging, he stopped doing what he was supposed to be doing and was telling the people behind him all about Maureen and the whole process and everything that they made. So, and she was really happy. So, she goes, I don't even care if my things didn't get bagged. It was so exciting hearing him, so.
I really have to say, every week, it's the best thing to look forward to, was spending the hour and a half with those guys. I mean, the kids are just fantastic.
Yeah.
They wanted to be there, they enjoyed it, and they walked away from it, and they were happy. You know, and we learned, and it wasn't just all about cooking. It's okay to make mistakes, it's okay to fix it if it happens. Don't beat yourself up. You know, it was a lot of little things that got tied into it, too. But I really have to say, highlight of the week every week.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. So, thank you all for what you do, because you really do brighten up those students' daily lives, so.
Goes both ways.
Thanks.
You know, letting them have the time to come, we appreciate it, too.
There any questions?
Cheryl?
Mr. Sennella does.
I would, not really a question, it's a thank you because as a participant of the football banquet before the Thanksgiving game was chaotic. I mean, it was nonexistent, and you brought it back. And now, we've got to bring back the membership because it was very healthily attended. And I think that last year, I mean, the display of food, the quality of food and everything, it was a real nice game, real nice game.
So, next year, meet us at 5:30, okay? We'll help you flip the eggs. Ladies, what are you doing next year, Thanksgiving morning?
No cooking at home, it's fine.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ladies, stay in here so late. Thank you so much. Our next item is number 10, school committee interest. Does anyone have any?
Well, you know I do. I always like to promote the success of Revere High School graduates. And so, this year, I was lucky enough to be a delegate to the Democratic Convention. And the keynote address was given by Senator Stanley Rosenberg. Stan was a graduate of Revere High School in 1967. He was also made a member of the Distinguished Alumni in the year 2000. And just a couple of nights after that, there he was on Nessen, talking to Susan O'Connell. The program is called The Take. And Sue O'Connell was a 1980 graduate of Revere High School, the president of her class. I think the first female president in ages. So, it was a great pleasure to see two of our graduates. I mean, there are many more who are preeminently successful, but that was a nice take. Oh, and by the way, the theme was that we have to do more for our kids, especially starting early education and making sure that college is affordable for everyone. Goals we have, too.
Anyone else, other than myself, have school interest? Okay, at this time, I just want to say, at the end of the school year, it's so nice that our faculty gets to go enjoy some downtime. But we do have a number of retirees that I want to respect and say goodbye to in no certain order. We have Karen English, Janice Halloran, Lois O'Connell, Marsha Shimonie, Elisa Gould, Ann Donahue, Mary Ellen Dakin, Peter DeGiulio, Paula Stevenson, Bubba, David Tick, Karen Divenzentis, Marguerite Guy, and Tonya Duramo. So, from the school committee, we thank you for the dedication and hard work. You deserve the best retirement ever. Enjoy this new journey of your life and cherish every moment and have fun. And we're all jealous of you, but enjoy. So, now, we will move on to motions, any motions? We do not have to go into executive sessions unless I wasn't told of something. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, at that point, our next meeting would be July 25. So, enjoy the nice summer weather that will come sooner rather than later at home. Good night.